And all of our very dedicated, very caring and amazing directors are present. Just want to go ahead and welcome our. Let's see here, Deb, can you go ahead and also pull up the, the, um, the next item for just to have that up real quick? On the one before that, it's the agreements.
Sorry, hold on, I just lost my whole board docs, just give me one second.
While you're doing that, I'll just get started with welcoming guests, so just want to welcome, um, our, um, our directors, our staff that are here tonight. Welcome if we have any scholars or families or community members. This is a time where a lot of folks are making dinner, maybe doing some homework, maybe just trying to relax a little bit or getting ready for work. And so just want to thank everybody for creating time and space to be able to be here with us tonight. We're going to be having a further discussion on these, but just want to introduce them. These agreements are from Glenn Singleton's Courageous Conversations About Race, A Field Guide For Achieving Equity in School. And they include staying engaged, experiencing discomfort and becoming vulnerable to speak your truth and expect and accept non-closure. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Director Hoover will be sharing the land acknowledgement.
Yeah, thank you so much. We in the Tuck Willa School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle. The Duwamish and Muckleshoot people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we recognize the Duwamish and Muckleshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
Thank you, Director Hoover. We'll move on to, to item two, approval of the agenda, agenda. May I get a motion?
Motion? So moved, what do I have to say? Motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
All in approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to public comment.
There is no public comment.
All right. We'll go ahead and move along to reports. Dr. Herndon, thank you.
Yes, thank you, President Paul Ryder and Board Directors. So for the race and equity report tonight, I have a few items. The first is, we do have a community discussion, virtual meeting this Thursday evening from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Discussion about our SROs. Myself and Chief Driver will be there for part of that meeting. We also have it being facilitated by an outside group. And our family liaisons will be available for translation. The link should be available. The family liaisons I know have put out that flyer on their Facebook pages as well. We should have it available on our page as well as our social media. So the intent from that is to get feedback from our various stakeholders, our community, our staff and students. And then, once we have all that information, we will take all that feedback, put it into themes, then have a discussion about where we want to move forward as far as SROs go in Tuck Willa School District. I had a conversation, I was part of a group last week with the Link Group, which is a group run by King County Violence Prevention. It includes some school districts as well as King County Services and other police departments from around the South King County area. And this is the same conversation that's happening in lots of different places. So the other police chiefs present, Chief Driver's not a part of that group, but it doesn't mean he doesn't have those conversations with others. They're very interested to hear our feedback as well. So I think it'll be a good process. So once we're completed with all those, we're hoping to get the student sections done. We just need to make sure that people are present. Chief Driver, it's important that he's there so that he can have, be a part of the conversation. Also for having students, that particular part, we need to find a place that was big enough to accommodate. And the pack was not available this week because they have student performance going on. So we're hoping to get that done in January. So more information as that comes out, but we're excited about that opportunity to be able to engage in that discussion. It's an important one and we want to make sure we're getting that feedback. Other race and equity items, we also have some feedback from Thorndike on progress for their mascot piece. Their racing equity team has been taking a look at that. They have reached out to both the Duwamish and the Muckleshoot for feedback about their mascot is Thunderbird, so they're trying to get feedback from them on that. They additionally asked if there was, if they had any suggestions for an appropriate mascot. They have not heard back yet. And I told them if they haven't heard back by the end of the week to let me know and I'll follow up next week after I get back from being out of state as well. So we're trying to make sure we're following that process. There is a timeline of the end of December, but I, some of the feedback I've had from just some colleagues is that the state is, most importantly, wanting to make sure that districts are engaged in that process. So we're trying to get it done by the end of the month, but from what I've heard, they feel like if you're genuine in what you've been trying to do in your process and you're not quite done by the end of December, you know, they're, they're not going to come and start finding you or anything like that. But that's our hope is that we still want to be completed by the deadline by the end of December. So by the next board meeting, I should be able to have some updates about that. Or if I hear information sooner, then we can get that out as well. And the last piece that I'll talk about is, we do have, we're looking forward to the beginning of the strategic planning sessions. We have that as an agenda item a little bit later. We did have discussion during a Saturday special meeting with the board to talk about that strategic plan, so we'll hear a little bit more about that later. But that's going to be, I think, a good process to hear from all sorts of stakeholders about the direction we've been going and the direction we need to go, where we need to focus as a district. And it will involve lots of different stakeholders. And I think the group that will be doing that will be authentic and really involved in trying to get the voices of our community members involved, which will be great. We also will have in January, some more work with the board and P J Town B S D, some of those one of the Saturday sessions. So I look forward to our continued work with P J Town B S D. So that's what I have on those items for, for now.
Any questions, further questions for Dr. Herndon? Thank you, Dr. Herndon.
Thank you.
Moving on to the COVID-19 update, I see Dr. Herndon. Unless there's someone else here.
No, I can give that one to. Our Nurse Miss Maestro was unable to attend tonight. So a couple of the updates that she had. The Tuck Willa COVID Vaccine Clinic, the one we had last week administered a total of 167 pediatric second doses, which is good progress for our community and our students. Excuse me, cases continue to come in waves and 77-day quarantine with a PCR test is effective so far as shown by a lack of transmission cases. So basically, you know, if, if there are symptoms or there's something out there and we're doing the 17 quarantine because of that with a PCR test, then it is showing that we're not getting the transmissions at the school level. There are cases that are certainly happening within our community. But right now, the data is not showing that that transmission is happening at school, which is great. We are trying to mitigate as much as possible. We also have events such as Care Night and Foster High School and Showalter Middle School Winter Concerts will be taking place. And we are using mitigation measures such as seating family units six feet away from each other and creating appointment slots for family units during Care Night. Again, that's meant to kind of control the audience participation, but still giving those opportunities for people to come and see their students perform, which is a great opportunity. One other item that was not from Miss Maestro, but I got a, received a call today from Rotary Club. They're also having a vaccination clinic this Friday. I'll get the information from them, just making the opportunity available for other vaccination opportunities. So I will get that information from the Rotary and then put that up on our website as kind of a link. So if there's anybody else who wants to take advantage of that opportunity, they can feel free to do so. They're also taking appointments for the pediatric doses. So that's why we want to make sure if people want to take advantage of that opportunity, they'll, they'll need to sign up for the pediatric appointments.
So on Friday, there are no pediatric appointments. It's only boosters and first adult series.
Okay.
And the Friday is taking place at the Tuck Willa Pantry.
Excellent. Director Bollock Jack has much more information on that.
Walkups are welcome.
Do we have any idea the percentage of our middle school and high schoolers that are vaccinated?
I don't have that information offhand, but I can ask our Nurse Miss Maestro if she does and we can get that out to you.
Okay, I was just curious.
All right, we'll move along to report C legislative priorities with Director Larson.
Thank you. So at the WASTA annual meeting, I got elected to be on the WASTA, the School Directors Association Legislative Committee. This is the committee that looks at all the legislative proposals and comes up with recommendations and, and works with the Strategic Advocacy Team at WASTA on interest, interacting with the legislature. So I'm going to be starting to, to work on that. I attached to this report, three things. One is, you know, the school district legislative priorities, which we looked at before. And then also the, the WASTA just came out with their legislative priorities. And then also, there's another group which is called School Funding Coalition, which is, if you look at the, across the top of that one, it's basically all the various, or at least a lot of the various organizations that represent people that work in the education, K-12 education field. So it's WASTA, WASBO, WASTA, the school directors, the superintendents, the principals and so forth. And what's interesting and good about this, if you, if you look at them, there's, there's a fair amount of consistency between all of them. And particularly the emphasis on staffing, the particularly the support staff groups, the counselors, the social workers, the nurses, all that group. And, and everybody's kind of pretty much on board with that. The, what's a little variation, we've been work emphasizing that, of course, plus doing that in an equitable way. In other words, doing that, that allocates those resources based on student needs in schools. That one, there's a little less, if you look at, if you look closely at the WASTA legislative priorities, they include the words equity and reflect the needs of students. And that's because we got passed a, a proposal this year to actually, that calls out specifically for new student need-based funding formulas. And so, you know, we're pretty much in line. The, the School Funding Coalition doesn't, they didn't quite, they don't go into the equity issue so much. The staff funding is an interesting one because, you know, everybody needs more, but, you know, it needs to be also an additional amount on top of that for, you know, the high poverty schools and schools with higher needs. So anyway, that'll be, the fact that, that there's becoming more and more alignment on this issue is, is really helpful so that the legislature can be getting the same, same message from a lot of different sources. And then they're, they're more likely to, to act on that. The couple of things, it was interesting, I was gonna, so as you may recall, the WASTA goes through this process of ranking the legislative proposals, there's like 120 of them. And, you know, we, as I, I brought back the list to, for us to look at and we ranked our top 15, I put those in. And of the top 15 that we ranked, nine of them, so WASTA, what, what they do, they rank and they look at the top 20. It kind of drives their policy agenda. And of the 15 that we submitted, nine of those ended up in the WASTA top 20, which is pretty good rate. So I'm encouraged by the fact that we'll be able to get, I think, a lot of the WASTA push behind some of these things will be helpful in dealing with the legislature. The couple of things I did want to kind of point out on this funding issue, the, so what the legislature did last, in the last year is they, for the 22, 23 school year, they funded an additional half of FTE of counselors for all the high poverty schools. So all of our schools are in that category. So starting in 2023, there'll be an additional half an FT available. The problem is, of course, they did it, the legislature did it as a budget prior proviso. So what that means is that it's good for one year and then it's gone unless they renew it or something. So, you know, that gets really difficult. We had the discussion with, you know, Brett Christopher, Principal at Showalter about one of his big issues is consistency in funding. And so one of the big things I'll be working on when I talk to legislature is, you know, they need to really put that into law. So in other words, get it out of a budget proviso and put it into law so that it happens year after year after year. And it doesn't, isn't dependent on the whim of, of a budget proviso. The other interesting thing that will be going on this year is that OSPI will be coming out with a proposal for, and they will have to find a legislature to, to back it, but we'll see. Add an additional essentially three quarters of an FTE in the nurse category for all schools. Now, their OSPI's approach on this is not equity-based, so they just, it's all the same for everybody. And so I want to keep, kind of keep on them about, you know, introducing an equity portion of that. Is that typically what happens is OSPI requests something, the legislature picks it up and it's called an OSPI Request Bill. And then that flows, floats through the legislative process, the committees and so forth. So I'll kind of be watching, watching for that one. The other thing I did want to just bring up at this point is every year, WASTA and WASTA Superintendent's Association organizes what they call a day on the hill where you get to go down and talk to legislature about issues. This year again, as last year, it will be virtual, so all the interactions with the legislature will be virtual. And the, what, the week of, the way WASTA is doing it, it'll be the week of January 31st. So 31st is a Monday, so sometime during that week, there, there will be opportunities for us to talk with our three legislators. That is Representative Berkless, Representative Hackney and Senator Hasagawa. And we won't, typically what I heard is the exact day and time probably won't get set until like the week before. So anyway, I just put out an invitation, anybody who wants, who would like to be in on that, they'll be kind of as it was last year, like a 15-minute call, so we have to be briefed and get to the point quickly. I mean, I'll be talking about this, the staffing funding issues, but if there's, you know, anybody else who wants to get in on that, staff, students, communities, whoever, just let me know and, and we can, we'll see what, what can rearrange. Unfortunately, they, they said, WASTA will be setting these up and they said the legislative staff doesn't typically like to commit until really soon, close to the date. So we probably won't know until it probably the second meeting in January when the dates are. But if anybody has ideas on that, you're welcome to let me know. We can try and, and work whoever is interested in being in on those calls into that. So that's all I got. Thanks. Unless there's any questions.
No question. I just, oh, sorry, I just wanted to say how grateful I am for your thoroughness and just knowledge around this. So thank you so much for sharing everything.
Welcome.
It was a great opportunity to get to do it last year with Director Larson and just encourage anyone who's interested. It's a great opportunity to be able to touch base with our rep, our two representatives and our senator. And it was awesome to also have our, one of our student reps there who really ran the show. She was the one who, who took care and then we were sort of the background singers, I think. So it was awesome. Well, we'll go ahead and we'll move along to the consent agenda. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second.
Any discussion? Right, being there's no discussion, we go ahead and, we'll go ahead and approve. Well, it's a consent agenda, right? So is, are we good or do we need to take a vote, Dr. Herndon?
You take a vote just to say all in favor of?
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
All right, and we'll move along to the board discussion, item six. So I, there's a slide prepared that I'll go ahead and utilize really quick. So at the beginning of our meeting, as part of the welcome, the four agreements from Courageous Conversations was introduced. And just want to talk a little bit about those because I believe I've been in meetings with each of us in which they're, they have, they've been used and want to just discuss a little bit about the background behind those. And, and, and so those four agreements are a tool and they're a tool out of that field guide written by, let's see here, let me pull up my, here, Glenn Singleton originally. And then notice on the slide, there's also a compass. And so what goes along with those four agreements is the Courageous Conversation Compass. Because our, as we are having sometimes difficult conversations, we need to make sure that we're also really paying attention to our own and also listening for where other folks are coming from in terms of their beliefs, the way of thinking, maybe feelings that are happening with us or others, and also behaviors and actions that are also happening. I know like in some of our meetings, I don't know if we ever have ever talked about the Courageous Conversation Compass, but that's also very important in the, in utilizing the agreements. And the fact that we have been developing together, and now we have Director Hoover, who will continue to develop along with us, with each other collectively and in community, and thinking about how we integrate anti-racism into our leadership and into our way of being. And so as part of our way of being is not only what we do in these meetings, but also how we do our meetings. And so these, these agreements, and I'm going to talk a little bit about each of them, are very helpful. It's a helpful tool to utilize for each other and to support each other and, and for ourselves. And so like in terms of the stay engaged, stay engaged and not, and like in terms of, and I know myself as a person of color, sometimes it's difficult to stay engaged because it's very, very exhausting and sometimes it's very hurtful or painful at times. However, part of my work is to try my best to protect myself and also stay open and remember to have an open heart in continuing the work. And oftentimes, like some common with, with folks who are white identified, like one type of defense mechanism is for silence or to remain closed or protected or not want to take a risk. And so like stay engaged sort of speaks to that. The second one, the experience discomfort, that this is a very common norm that oftentimes, or we don't want to experience discomfort and especially in education, when you think about if, if we're educators or if we're in some type of a leadership position, we want to make sure that, you know, like we're taught to be calm, cool, collected, make sure. However, especially with conflict, it's, 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 it's something that we should welcome and also be able to really maybe embrace. And so I'll just share a little bit about conflict. So conflict in itself is neither positive or negative. Conflict is normal, conflict is common, conflict is human. And conflict, what conflict means like as a, as a definition, is a difference of needs. So if I have a different need or a different perspective and someone else has a different need or a different perspective, there's difference there. And how we manage or how we sort of go into those differences can be potentially harmful or helpful. And so just kind of welcome that because if we are experiencing, experiencing discomfort, it usually means that there's some needs or something is, is different. We're up against a different perspective, a different need, something that's maybe different from what we're used to. And then to be able to speak our truths and that, that we all have different truths and have different perspectives. And this group has amazing insight and amazing experience to offer. And so that, you know, we all bring those amazing truths to the table. And then finally, this one, I think, is oftentimes, especially on one of, at least for me, one of the more challenging ones, especially afterwards, after something has happened, because it's like, ugh! And it's like, and, and that discomfort, just kind of recognizing that oftentimes in leadership, we are going to have times where things aren't always neat and tidy, things aren't always easy. Things are, we may feel that we've just vomited or something has happened, it's totally messy. But it's, it's just a point in time and it's part of a larger process. And so I just shared these and I'm going to also just kind of open it up to everybody else to maybe, if you have any other thoughts about these, these agreements, utilizing these agreements at, you know, throughout our discussions, but then also having them introduced at the beginning of our meetings to sort of ground us in that work, in the work of transformative partnerships and education, transformative leadership. Just welcome anyone to share.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and jump in. So thank you for bringing these forward. I think I'm a huge proponent of community understandings, norms and agreements to ensure that the conversation is grounded in something. And I think that, that these are really valuable. I think that what like, understanding these in theory and understanding them in practice, I think are two slightly different things. And so I think some conversation around potentially like what these could really look like for individuals, for us, I think, could be really important. Especially thinking about the idea of, I mean, like engagement, using that one as an example. What does engagement really look like for individual folks? Like, I think we need to have like a good understanding of what that looks like so that we know when folks disengage. So that then we can really support each other in re-engaging in, in the work or the conversation or whatever is taking place. I kind of, on this topic and also slightly thinking about SEL work, particularly the ruler that's, that, that we are working to implement over the next little while in, in the district. I think there's a lot of value in kind of co-creating, again, what we want to feel and how we want to be in space together. And I think there might be opportunity to use this and also side by side, like create a charter that is from the Ruler Curriculum Charter, where that really engages with how we all want to feel and specifically like what that looks like. Because again, I think it's important to really hone in on the practice piece of it. But again, I'm so grateful that you brought these forward. I think it's really, really important. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead, Director Larson, sorry.
Okay, I, yeah, I think these are always good things to keep in mind. I, one of the things that I was, I tend to kind of go to examples. So one of the things that Director Poe Ryder brought up. one of the things that Director Bowrider brought up, actually brought up a few times, is the whole issue of assessments and how we, you know, how the district is doing those and there's, there's, you know, in terms of different, I think that's, that's a good area, for example, for to to go into because people, I mean, there's lots of people have discomfort about that issue. And so kind of bringing people together on that one is, I think, would be a good example of doing that, and I think that's an important one to to kind of delve into. And we have, you know, people kind of having different needs, different perspectives on it to kind of come together and and iron out and you want to always necessarily come to everybody to to agreement, but at least everybody will will have been heard. And I think it makes for a stronger organization when you do those kinds of things, so that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I use these all the time also, so I appreciate having them in front of us. I do look, I like Carly, I do look forward to maybe at our retreat, having the time to develop our own. Because part of what that, in that conversation, I think what happens is that we're able to state before one another what we need from each other for support or what support looks like from each other or, or maybe even, you know, talk about how we do with conflict or what are the things that, you know, trigger each of us and how do we work through that? How do we recognize that and work through it? So it's a, it's a discussion, yeah, of what does stay engaged actually look like for you and for me? And what do we do to help each other and that kind of thing? So I look forward to, to building on these as a team and not just letting them stand by themselves, but making them really ours.
Bridget, you're on mute if you're talking to us.
Thank you, just also want to give props to our district and also our building level, race and equity committees and amazing groups of leaders who have been doing this work and have pushed it forward. I've seen it spread out into other community meetings as well. And so in alignment with the work that's happening with, at the building level and district level, this is part of that kind of work. And also thinking about like our strategic planning and I'm even thinking about our presentation from our last meeting in which ways to really walk the walk of transparency, building trust and, you know, what does that look like? So as leaders, how can I ever ask that of the community if I'm not willing to do that myself? And not only think I, you know, maybe talk the talk, but walk the walk, like actually try my best to practice. And so I, I just see us as a board, we've grown already. And now I think that just continuing to integrate into practice our anti racist praxis in terms of what we've been learning and how we apply it. And so similar to it, Director Bullerjack said about the retreat and looking at other types of practices, like we've even talked about like restorative circle practices and things like that in which we're able to create and do business, if you will, in community. So that's all I had, wanted to introduce it, sounds like we can continue the conversation, me as an item in a future retreat. That's all I have, I'll go ahead and move along to the next item. Several boards here. And so we have question only presentations and I think we'll start with a special education update and budget impact. We've got Ms. Jones here. So any further questions for Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I can, I guess I can start. One of the things that, let's see, I guess I'm looking at the presentation. Slide four. I wonder if a reference to the care teams. And I still need to do this right now, but something I've been interested in for quite some time is kind of an overview of what the care teams are seeing, that is trends, overviews. You know, as, as they're looking at at our students, what, what kind of insights they're getting? It would be helpful to hear any of that kind of information.
That's, yes, that's great. We are, you know, starting our MTSS initiative through our partnership with the PSESD and OSPI. Sorry, the vacuum just came on in the office, hold on, we shut my door. So with our, right now, we're building upon the first year of the three year process, we're working with our district team. And so, yes, I think it's going to be very important to, to look at the data and the trends of how our students are doing through the tiered supports through, since we are tend to always focus on the end result, which we see sometimes that kids are tested for special education. And then we look at all of, we can look at that data to see who's been evaluated, who's eligible. But I think you're right, but it's important that we drill down to what supports we're doing through the MTSS work and through the care teams. And I know that our, our, each care teammate at each school does keep a log of notes from all of their meetings for their students. And so you're right on the money on that one, that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah, at this level, we just need to see kind of trends and overviews. So if there's things that I need, we need to go advocate for, you know, in particular related to, you know, students experiencing homelessness and whatever it is, I mean, I don't know what it is, but anyway, that would be really helpful. So that'd be great. The next thing I was interested on, on page 10, so you have, you know, prioritized goals for special education and I guess to, I think on number one, you talk integrated preschool, which I guess you said is really inclusive is the term that I'm familiar with, I guess. Okay, so the first question on that one is, it says inclusive for Tuckwell Elementary, is that not a goal for all of our schools in that regard or is there some reason Tuckwell Elementary in particular was called that?
Um, yes, you are correct. So when I came to the district, we had one self-contained special education preschool. And so obviously we wanted to start looking at how our students would be included, usually utilizing inclusionary practices and looking at that continuum of placement options for our students to look at the least restrictive environment. And so for our kiddos, we, at the time for Ecap and Head Start did not have any special needs students in those classrooms, with the exception of some of our speech only students that qualified for speech and language services. And so we're intentionally partnering with, with Ecap and putting aside a number of, a number of slots, as you will, for students and, and keeping it open so we could continue that conversation that in Ecap, we have a certain amount of community kids, a certain amount of kids that qualify for Ecap. And then we're setting aside number of students that we can look at and see if they're a candidate for an inclusive program. And so we hope to have that in every single school. And so this year, the thing that's unique about this preschool is we have a certificate of special education teacher that's teaching the Ecap class rather than a classified teacher and a, an ESP that is trained in special education as well. So they are working alongside the other classified staff for Ecap. And so that's what's, that's what makes that unique and the funding is kind of half and half for Ecap and special ed. And so when we look at our other preschools, preschool classes in the district, and I'm sorry, the vacuum keeps getting louder. It's right beside my window. We are going to be looking at which, which students that, you know, can be included in the preschool. And we would just have to look at case managers that then could push in to give support rather than having the certificated teacher. And so we'll just build upon that as we continue to grow our preschool programs.
That sounds great. Just a kind of a general comment on that one and some others. So you have the, the, these goals in terms of, of doing things. So as I, as I pointed out, and you're obviously well aware, the state has these various indicators for special education programs to kind of measure and provide some indicators as to how, how well we're doing and setting some goals and so forth. And I guess I would just encourage you to, because I know you're creating the data for this because the law, the state requires it, use some of these to maybe set some goals. So for example, I noticed, you know, our graduation rate for special education students has gone up, you know, from forty-three to sixty-six in the last four years, which is excellent. And so that's one of the measures that they use, so we could be looking at that one. It looks like when I was looking at some of the other data, you know, the dropout rate is a little, has been a little problematic, sometimes the data is kind of old from some, some what gets on the OSPI website, so it may be old data. But, you know, they also have a goal that are indicator there about, you know, percentage of students in, in the general classroom, which is another good one, I think, and I, you know, some of these, these goals you have to me are ends to a mean of getting, you know, better services for students. So I guess I'd just like to, and I, I think, you know, one of these ones, 6B is inclusive preschool program. So there's, we got a measure right there to be looking at and kind of following year to year to see how we're doing on that. Number seven talks about IEP showing, you know, improvement, that's another one that I think would be helpful for, for us to see. I mean, there's, there's like fourteen of them and I'm not saying I'll pick off fourteen, but you know, if there's a few that you think are focused on, I think it would be really helpful to just look at that and look at our baseline and say, okay, here's what we're trying to get to and, and use this data that's already sitting there. So that's just a, a comment to encourage that. The other couple of questions are kind of related to the funding and I think this one still would be good for you. I know, we know that special education is, is horribly underfunded and Director Apoer Rider is working with a bunch of school board members in the, in the King County to try and put some more pressure on the legislature. I mean, that's, this underfunding of special education is statewide, so it's not, it's not unique to us. But I'm, I'm curious, you know, the underfunding is, was it to the tune of one point four million or something anyway? But there was, you showed significant improvement. I mean, we were, I think thirty-six percent underfunded, you know, previous year, now we're twenty-four percent underfunded or the projection is for this year. And I'm just really curious as to the question of, you know, what, what do you think caused that to happen? And your answer here, you talk about increase in supports needed, that sounds like an increased cost item. I'm wondering, is there something, yeah, I just, I didn't feel like there, there must be something that's going on and I'm interested in the dynamics that is causing that percentage to go down? Is it, can you give me any more insights into that?
Um, yes, well, and I would just echo and agree with your statements about being underfunded. And we do have those opportunities to try to recoup some of the money from just the IDA grant or safety net for out of district placements and, and those are hard to predict, I'm seeing as we do have some students that move in. And then we, even with an out of district placement already in their IP, and so we need to honor that as commensurate services until we have some more data to make another determination. I know Miss Birdsong had some insight into that particular question. And is there anything that you wanted to say, say, because I see you popped up?
I did, I would just say, Dave, that means, just for the sake, the time, time sake, that both Jennifer and I can have a conversation with you guys and to just share that information with the rest of the board members because it goes into a little bit more depth that I just don't have the numbers or details right in front of me. So just for time's sake, we can have a, an offline meeting and then we can share those results with the rest of the board members.
Okay, sure, that'd be good. I just, I'm really interested in, in, you know, what's going on because I want to make sure if there's something really good that we did that we don't undo it at some point because of, you know, budget reasons or whatever. And, or if there's something that I need to advocate at the legislature for, I'm just really interested in those dynamics. Because, yeah, I mean, it's like, looking at the numbers like four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars less subsidy this year. And that's, that's a pretty big deal for us, five hundred thousand dollars. So I just, so, okay, that's great, I can do that. And let's see. Think that's. Yeah, that was all the questions that I had, so get in contact with you guys and set that up, thanks.
Thank you.
Others, before we move on to the next presentation. Ms. Jones, you must have done a great job answering our questions initially earlier this week, so thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
We'll move along to grants update with our district chief financial officer, Ms. Birdsong. Any questions?
Yeah, I wonder if you can shed a little light, a more light on this special ads section six nineteen, that's not one I've, I had heard before. What is, so I assume that's a, let's see, that's a federal program, is it targeted at something specific?
Yeah, it's part of the ID grant, a cluster, and so that covers, I want to say, a point three FD for a parent educator. So it's under the special education cluster.
Okay, so is this something that we get automatically or is this something we have to apply for?
Oh, we apply for it every year, it's nothing new. Maybe once upon a time, everything was kind of grouped together under just a special ed IDA. And I just broke it out and separated them.
Okay. I did want to just, I appreciate your adding the columns to this spreadsheet indicating some of the positions that get funded under these different programs. Because one of the things is important, I think, for particular legislators to understand is that we're using some of these things like lap money and title money to, which are supposed to be used for academic supports. We're using them for things like community liaisons, you know, social emotional, you know, those kinds of things which really should be funded by the state in, in other ways. So this is good information for me to, to know. And I was, let's see, in one of these columns, under title one, you have liaisons and you have dropout coordinator, I assume that's the graduation specialist, is that? I've seen, I think this is Catrice Cypress, I guess, is that her position? Okay, yeah, it's, I know, I've seen her, that, that use of dropout coordinator, which sounds a little strange to me. I, I, you know, I think her, her real job is graduation specialist, which, you know, is a more positive look at the thing, so anyway. I think that's, so I appreciate this, this, this spreadsheet, it's, it's helpful when I'm, when I'm doing my work. So that's all I got, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Well, we appreciate you, Ms. Birdsong, thank you. Well, it looks like. Well, it looks like number eight, I don't see anything. So we'll just move right along into a very, very productive. Action items section. So we'll go ahead and get started with a approval of the humans resources staffing report. May I get a motion to approve the human service staffing report?
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to congratulate again the transportation department for hiring a bus driver because. In these times, hiring bus drivers is not an easy thing to do. And also glad to see we have a new ELL parent educator. Hiring people at this, at this time is just generally not an easy thing to do. So I appreciate all the whoever. Went in the effort that went into getting those folks hired.
And I'd like to just commend Harvard for all the work that he's done in the district. And I'm sad to see him go.
I am also very saddened. To lose such an amazing professional as Harvard.
Yep, he's done a really good job. Assisting and supporting athletics and activities and other items. So I know he. He's got a an opportunity and another spot. So that's a relocation piece that that impacted that one. So I wish him well in all his future endeavors. That's for sure.
Yeah, I know. He's, he's leaving a really good legacy behind. I mean, the, the programs of. I've always been impressed for years on the sportsmanship of our students, athletes that participate in that program and. And I know he was, he was integral in in the bond projects to get all our new athletic facilities in place. And so. He's leaving a really good, good legacy for whoever comes next.
Hey, there's been a motion in a second.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? We'll move along to item B, approval of resolution nine two zero, approval of an interfund loan. May I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any, any questions here? Discussion? We will vote for approval. All those in favor say aye. Yes, whatever you want to say. Thumbs up is good too. Any approve or any, any, did I, oh, did, I'm sorry, I missed that. Did we say yay, yay, aye? Okay. All right, we'll move along. Approval of city park leases for Foster and Riverton Park. May I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Shall we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Any, any on these? All right, we're very productive. We're moving on to our final action item. Approval of district strategy plan proposal, center for educational effectiveness. Oh, about one more.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Discussion, I just have a question.
Oh, oh, this, yes, it's time for discussion.
I should have been more assertive there. I'll get better at that. I just, I know we've had a lot of discussion around this. I'm really excited. I think this is great. I just want to ensure, since we're not really seeing like. What their plan is, once we approve this and kind of get to the next phase. Will be, there'll be more conversation around what the planning and the process is going to look like. So we'll have some input there. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So this is just to engage in the contract with them. And then we'll have further discussion about what that looks like being implemented.
Good. Thanks so much.
You got it.
There's been a lot of work. So thank you, Dr. Herndon. Thank you, Mr. Howard, and thanks to everybody else who's been working on this. All right. We'll go ahead and go take it to a vote. All those that approve, say aye. All right, any opposed? I think that was unanimous. The chorus was full. All right, we'll move along to. E approval policies two four zero two through two four zero nine. May I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to get us before, get it before us.
Second.
Question on any of the policies.
It's been brought to our attention that these policies may have a negative, negative effect on our students. And affect the graduation rates. Ted, do you have? Something to? Add to this? Mr. Howard?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Did you have a conversation, something to add to the conversation about that, the policies? That affect graduation?
We're cutting in and out, but I, I'm, I'm trying to read between the lines here. The, this will only enhance our students. We had it at a B level saying that B is saying you're at mastery. When I did my research, other districts have even gone down to a D is passing. And if a D is passing, then they said that's considered mastery. We kept it at a C level and I'm going to work with the, the buildings. The teachers and administrators to get a percentage of what that looks like, the seventy percent or seventy-two percent. Because we have that in our policy as well. And so this will actually help our students. Reach their goal, which is to prepare them for high school and beyond. So this will. Continue that, that process. So, and we want it to be equitable using our race and equity tool. You see that the what's before you is the ability for all courses to be at this level, not just math or. Our core courses, the language arts, science, history, but all our courses. So it's equitable across the board for all students.
So are you proposing an amendment to the policies that are in front of us to change it from a B to a C?
Yeah, we had a strike through on that B. There's originally in. The original format to go to a C. At the same time, this aligns with our other policy that if students failed. First semester, it allows students to continue on to second semester. And continue their learning and then earn credit if they pass second semester back to first semester and they can still earn credit. So that. That is aligned with new strategies of helping students continue on with their peers as well as giving students. A more equitable chance to continue with their learning.
I would like to see us table this until. There's more conversation with the high school teachers. Is that possible, please?
You also see an email from Mr. Blanton that's attached after we've had conversations with his department. About this process. They've been having ongoing conversations since this came out probably about a month ago. And so you'll see his attachment to it. And so far, I've only talked to one department head. The math department about it, which was, he was pretty excited about it. But. I haven't got a chance to take, talk to the rest of the department heads, but Mr. Blind has had these conversations.
But that's only one of the policies. There are several policies listed.
All the policies that are listed are, are, are the policies. And I'm, I'm happy to have more conversations with. With the teachers about having CB at the mastery instead of B being a mastery, which excludes students. But a C is passing as well. So it supports students, but I'm happy to go back and have more conversations. From with all the departments and get maybe a letter, if that's what you want, or signatures from each department, from oral languages to. The other courses, CTE courses around that.
Sorry, I only see the one in the letter, only, the only policy that's listed as twenty-four oh three. So. I'm concerned about the other policies.
Are you looking for a letter from each department head in support of that?
Well, I.
Or can we just amend it? Can we amend them all?
If you, if you look at each of the policies, the policy is basically the same, but each policy is for each department. So the change that you see for math is the same change because we would want that consistency in, in expectation. In each discipline, not to have it be a B in math, but a C in. Social studies and language arts. So this makes it consistent throughout each of the departments.
So the amendment would be to all of them?
Yes, if you look at each one of them, they each say. C instead of B. So that strike through is there for each one of those.
That was amended since most of us read this in preparation for the meeting.
Okay, yeah, as I'm looking at them right now, they each have that strike through from B to C.
Okay. I would be supportive with this amendment as, as amended.
I think I would. I think I would feel more comfortable if I had a conversation with the staff that expressed concerns about it to see if this. Adequately. Address their concerns.
Edna, could you share for the purpose of just board information? What is the concern? What are the concerns? So just for clarity?
Well, I, I wrote down what this person said. It was raising the bar for credit retrieval from. A C, second semester to a B both semesters to retrieve credits for previous course in sequence. Negatively affects their graduation rate. So I, I believe this addresses it. But I would just feel more comfortable putting this on hold for a couple of weeks to, to just have a further conversation with these people.
So the feedback from at least one staff person was that by. A, a great, passing grade of C is more equitable? In terms of, is that what I'm, is that what I heard?
Well, because there are so many students on the line for graduation, as they're, they're concerned about. The students that would be impacted by this for their graduation. So when we put it from a. That they had to earn a B. Now we've put it to they have to earn a C for that retrieval. I just want to make sure that we're not excluding any, any students. I don't know how else, I don't know how else we could do this to make sure it was feasible. But I just would feel more comfortable holding off on this to talk to staff a little bit. Now, I believe Ted has talked to staff, yes?
Yes.
And did you talk, were you able to speak with all the? All the departments?
I'm happy to go back and talk to all the departments about the furthering the procedures around what the percentage would be. That was the only question that was raised so far. The percentage before in the policy, there was a B. A grade that was higher and a percentage. And now there was some conversation around, is it a C minus? Is it just a C or is it a C plus? So we wanted to get a percentage of what that looked like, but that was the only. Continuous conversation. And I told them that we could easily develop a procedure around that. That's pretty easy to do. We've done that before.
So there was interest in more clarity around a definition of a C.
Right, right now, we, we know that grades are, you know. Trying to use a positive word right now. It's subjective rather than really. Aligned across the board with all our grades. And that's just work we have to do.
I, I can share because I'm, I'm familiar with other schools or. Schools, districts who have gone through similar processes because we're, of course, we're not the only one. We're certainly not the first one. That sort of the logic behind is really looking at our current practices of how we do grading and how grading. Institutionally has been problematic. And, and in order to practice, you know, anti racist types of policy work, this is an example. Of that, that a C is a passing grade. It's, it's absolutely a passing grade and. And so like, I know, like, I've just have been part of those processes before. Experienced them and discussions about what they're all about. It's. That for any other student in any other class, if, if, if a student can pass a, a class with a C. They're passing the class. And so if someone didn't do well, maybe they had struggles the first semester. And then we're able to say, come to class more, do more assignments, and we're able to actively participate and earn a C. Have they not? Earned? The grade would be the question. So that's my familiarity with this, this type of process.
Right. I just, I just like that. Each department to have a voice in this.
So you would, you would like to have a letter from each department saying they support it?
I don't, I don't know that we need a letter, but about, yes.
Okay.
I would, if you don't mind.
Not a problem. I'll, I'll work with. Principal Blanton to make sure he gets a letter from each department head, would, and make sure they have a discussion.
Thank you.
I guess I had a, I was curious about. The letter from Mr. Blanton about says, last year, that school year, Foster had over five hundred students receiving an F grade or no credit. I, I don't know how many of them are F's and how many of them were no credits. I mean, I understand last year was. An unusual year, to say the least. I assume a lot of them were no credits. So my, I guess I'm a little concerned about if we're saying, are we? If there's material that. And I guess this kind of maybe, I don't know, it may be differential by subject area. Here we're kind of lumping all the, all the subject areas into one, but. In math, you know, math kind of builds on, builds on itself. And so. If we're saying that. And I guess the way I'm reading this is students who are successful in the second semester of a math course. Earning a level of B or higher, C or higher. So. The earning the level of B or higher, that's, that's the policy as it exists today. And so that's been there for, I don't know how many years, but. And so we're saying C, having failed the first semester will be deemed to have demonstrated mastery and competency and knowledge of skills. Covered in the first semester. Is that? I don't know. Do people think that's, that's a fair statement in a math course? I can imagine maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I mean, if you don't, you haven't. Gotten the concepts in the first semester. Does that, and then, but you did well in the second semester. Does that mean that you? Did in fact master all the things in the first semester?
I, I think that's, I think that's the point of both the letter and the change is that. In order to pass the second semester, you had to have mastered those concepts from the first semester. So. As I'm reading. Principal Blanton's letter, those five hundred students that got an F or no credit, those could have been the first semester pieces.
Right.
Then if they had been able to get a C and not a B in the second semester. It would make up for those no, no credits or Fs because they now have the concept and achieve the mastery. Rather than having that no credit or F still on file. So I think that's the point of this is to say, you know, if that class builds on it, on itself, like algebra one, algebra two, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
And that mastery in the second semester. Says, yeah, at a C, you have achieved that mastery. And in order to, the only way you can get to that. Is to have mastered those concepts from the first semester in order to do that. That's as I read that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Am I correct on that, Mr. Howard?
Yes, you're correct. That's just the way I was going to read it. Probably ten years ago, we did the same process at Garfield High School and we had huge success with our students continuing on. We won all sorts of awards, but it was a consistent effort from our teachers in algebra. To make sure that our, we weren't gatekeeping students, starting off at ninth grade. A lot of students were coming into the system and. It was a huge equity issue. Excuse me, huge equity issue around our students coming in. We did a couple of things. Number one, we lowered the class size. And so we kept our class size under twenty to make sure students mastered the skills they needed. They were going to go beyond. But we also recognized that. We weren't getting equitable supports for our students by the time they got to calculus. And we want to make sure. We had a fair representation of coming in algebra and actually getting into calculus. And it wants students get out of that progression. They didn't have a chance because they're doing makeup courses and that put them off the trajectory of getting to there. So this really. So this really helped our students, but it took a consistent effort from each department to understand the skills the students were missing and then actually teach to it. But we, one of the big things we did was we lowered the class size. And so we kept it under twenty, and it gave teachers more time to actually work with students individually so they had the skills. And we saw a huge impact diversity wise for our students to get to the higher level math courses, which we knew they needed those skills. But we did it across the board. The other piece that we did that was really fantastic was we started doing honors for all, starting in ninth grade. And that also gave students a whole huge lift, and we started collaborating across the board. So these are moving in those directions. We saw grades being subjective and, you know, depending on what assignments we were actually assigning kids, a B or an A could have been busy work, or it could have been where we're aligned to the standards. So it caused a huge conversation for us to start having, what are the essential standards that we want to make sure students actually had to be successful to move on to the next level to geometry, to trig, to calculus? And so it opened up a alignment piece once we started having these conversations about what you do you really need to move on? And so some some districts looked at it, saying a D moved on, some looked at it as C, some looked at it as B. But, you know, these are great conversations to be having with everybody to align our grading practices across the board. So they're they're all great conversations.
And I would say the way that this plays into the earlier conversations we had both about strategic direction work and the presentation we had during the work session is we'll know based on some of that data in a dashboard to know whether or not how our students are doing and enrolling in courses that build upon these classes and to know how many and their success rate at the post secondary level, are they taking remediation courses? Are the courses that we're preparing them and passing them along really preparing them for that next level of what they want to do? So if the grades are just subjective, and if you talk to higher ed folks, they'll tell you, okay, so they got As and Bs in high school math. Why are they having to take a remediation course here at the higher ed level? You know, we just want to make sure that that we're preparing our students for whatever it is they want to do, whether it's, you know, trade school, getting into a job, whatever it is, this all fits into that. So hopefully this builds upon the other work that we're trying to do.
Yeah, the remediation issues are really interesting. I've been in lots of discussions about that. And you know what, you know, some of it can be related in math to, you know, if you're if you're taking an entrance exam in in college for something that's some math that you took two years ago, you know, you may not remember it all. But anyway, that's a whole other discussion. So, yeah, okay, this this makes sense. I mean, I guess I'm I'm okay with with the changing the B to a C. So.
I I just have one quick question, Mr. Howard. How did you get your class sizes down to that? To have that effect on your students?
All the staff agreed that math was a gatekeeper, and we we actually not only lowered the class size under twenty, but we gave our math department a common prep, so they had two preps so they could plan. And everybody gave that up as a as a school to make that happen. We saw that as a huge gatekeeper, and we had and the most failures were happening in math at Garfield. So we were able to go back and take a hard look at that, and it brought our staff close together to address that. At the same time, that's where it moved us into honors for all at ninth grade and some other strategies we started doing to impact some of the gatekeeping, I would say, norms that have been put in place over hundreds of years that keep our students from being able to get to four year colleges or even college and career. And so we started dismantling those things, and they've been very, very well received. But it takes a lot of conversations with your staff to get to that point. But, yeah, we we did this about ten years ago. It's been a huge success. We partnered with the University of Washington, started talking about different strategies, what we could do with Lonny Horn, and we're doing that right now. We have, thanks to Gates, Lonny Horn, and a couple of other professors are working with us from ELL to help us kind of dismantle some of the things that we were doing. We've already dismantled some of the remediation courses that were actually taking our population of students and putting them on a different trajectory. So students taking math wouldn't even get to trig or even geometry because they were taking point five algebra or one point five algebra, and they would stay in that algebra range for years and never reach geometry or even calculus. And we know when they take SAT or ACT, they they have to get past algebra. And, you know, and we can actually take a look at the data around what algebra does to students when they don't have their proper skills to move on. So it's it's a lot of data around it as we settle on certain supports. The biggest piece I would say is PD for our teachers to help them continue to have different strategies and different tools to be able to help our students as they move forward. Mr. Sample is doing a really great job, and our teachers are really excited about coming together and looking at certain strategies they're doing, and they'll continue to work on that as they move forward. So but we'll we'll get that information and get it back to you.
Thank you. I just I just want to make sure that when people express a concern that we address it.
Totally. And I want to acknowledge Director Morris, like in terms of our racial equity tool, we need to, you know, get our feedback from those that are impacted, right? And if we have if we have educators that aren't that maybe don't see, you know, understand the reasoning or the importance of say something like this and why, why we have to look at the existing structures and how they these structures actually end up harming some of our community members, and especially with math and the progression and the access into the higher level math for especially for our Black Indigenous and Latinx. There's huge, I mean, that's huge in education, like that's a there's huge bodies of work, especially with guided pathways work and everything else. There's a lot there. And so that this is part of that work of improving our pathways for our students. So thank you, Director Morris, for bringing up the the question. Thank you to everyone for a very fruitful conversation. It sounds like we might need some more fruitful conversations happening with some of the educators.
I'd like to thank the staff members who who spoke up and expressed their concerns.
All right, so we had a motion on the table. So I guess just point of order. Debbie or Dr. Herndon, if you have any recommendations, is it as simple as saying we'll table it, or do we need to do anything here?
Yeah, I think there was a it came up for discussion, and then you had a proposal to table it. So then it would be the board voting to table it or not, or to go ahead and vote. So that's up to the board now to table it.
I think you need you would need a like a motion to table it.
Right.
It was mentioned, but.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll call for a motion to table.
I'd like to move to table it.
Second.
Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we'll go ahead and hold that one. And finally, just before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody health and wellness into the end of the year. We'll get to see each other next year, right?
Keep having a good time.
So may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks all.
Bye bye.